Good evening and welcome. The December 9th, 2025, meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Measuring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. This evening, we will have our student board members share our board commitment statement.
We are the Marion School District Leadership. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our most three important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible.
To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you both. That was wonderful. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices and put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operations of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a pitch form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student disciplinary matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Good evening, Ms. Martinez Young. Will you please call the roll?
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Isaac Smith, North Marion High School.
Here.
Shereah Hassan, Dona Brami, Dunellen High School.
Here.
Dr. Danielle Brewer, Interim Superintendent.
Here.
And Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Young. I want to welcome Dr. Brewer to our meeting. Will you please share our inspiration and who's going to lead us in our inspiration and pledge of allegiance this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Chad Fraser to come to the podium to introduce our special guest this evening.
Good evening, Chair Dr. James, Vice Chair Conrad, Board Members, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Brewer. Tonight, we have the honor of welcoming cadets from Bellevue High School's Air Force JROTC program to present the inspiration and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Serving as our color guard this evening is Cadet Staff Sergeant Freddie J. Mora, Cadet Technical Sergeant Emmanuel Gomez, Cadet Technical Sergeant Emmanuel Rivera, and Cadet First Lieutenant Valentina Hernandez. And delivering tonight's inspirational message is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Eric Smijer. We are grateful to these student leaders for representing Bellevue High School and the United States Air Force JROTC program with pride and professionalism. At this time, please welcome Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Smijer for the inspiration.
Thank you. I'd like to begin speaking on Air Force JROTC. It's really been a wonderful experience for me and provided a great opportunity to learn some discipline and professionalism and integrity. I really believe that I'll be able to carry some of these skills and really help the community. And I plan on going into the military and hopefully helping out some veterans. Now, my first year, I didn't do anything, to be frank. I was not sure of what I wanted to accomplish and what I needed to do to get there. But I saw great leaders before me that I really looked up to, and they helped me. And in my second year, I really started to kick things off, started to get more comfortable, performed more, show after-school, show some real interest. And then, the third year, I started to see some real results. Working with some more experienced leadership and getting a little closer, working with the instructors, is really wonderful opportunity. And now this year, I can say that my leadership skills have tremendously increased, and I'm thanking all of the instructors and the cadets I've gotten to work with. Thank you. And I would like to call the colors for the presentation. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
Thank you for that. Dr. Brewer, I believe we have two recognitions.
We do. At first, I'd like to ask our K-12 Coordinator, Mr. Mark Ingram, to come to the podium, and he will introduce our Sunshine State Scholars this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Good evening, Board Chair and School Board Members. Tonight, I am proud to present two outstanding students who have earned the honor of being Marion County's 2026 Sunshine State Scholars. Please join me in congratulating Salath Fernandez Castro from Dunellen High School and Delaney Peterson from Bellevue High School. Both of these exceptional juniors were selected for their remarkable achievements in STEM and their commitment to academic excellence. The selection process considers advanced coursework, state assessments, SAT/ACT scores, volunteer service hours, which they have a ton of, extracurricular competitions, and overall leadership. While we have many students who could have been selected for this, Salath and Delaney truly distinguished themselves during the interview process. They impressed the panel with their professionalism, enthusiasm, and passion for STEM. We also want to recognize our alternate from Vanguard High School, Gabrielle Chavalona. Each year, Florida's Sunshine State Scholars Program honors the state's top 11th-grade students in STEM disciplines. These scholars will represent Marion County at a statewide event in March where they will get to connect with Florida's colleges, universities, and STEM industry leaders. Congratulations again to Salath and Delaney for this incredible achievement.
Thank you for sharing that, and we will take a picture with you all, so please make sure you hang out until the end. Board, did anyone have any comments at the moment? Okay, we have another recognition, I believe?
Yes, Mr. Lamar Rember is the Principal Supervisor over the next two proud administrators. He's going to introduce our Principal and our Assistant Principal of the Year. Thank you, Mr. Rember.
Good evening and thank you, Dr. Brewer, Board Chair Dr. James, and members of the board. It is my honor to recognize our 2025 Assistant Principal of the Year, Ayesha Peep, the Assistant Principal of Instruction for North Marion High School. In just four and a half years as an administrator, she has already distinguished herself as one of our best instructional leaders. She has a remarkable ability to relate to every member of her school community. Her support, talent, and natural leadership presence has made her an outstanding model of what strong, student-centered administration should look like in our schools. When asked what this recognition means to her, she stated, "I am deeply humbled and thankful for this recognition, which reflects the many leaders, administrators, colleagues, teachers, staff, and students who have poured into me and shaped my growth. I consider it a blessing to do this work each day, guided by Maya Angelou's reminder, 'When you get, give; when you learn, teach,'" a truth that remains the heartbeat of my work." This is Ms. Ayesha Peep. I would also like to recognize our 2025 Principal of the Year, Mrs. Lori Manressa from the Hillcrest School. Mrs. Manressa has thirty-five years in education, and for twenty-five years, she has led the Hillcrest School with unwavering commitment, compassion, and vision. Her leadership has shaped the lives of countless students and families, and she continues to be the steady, trusted guide that both staff and the community look up to. She is an exceptional leader whose influence reaches far beyond the walls of her campus. When asked what this recognition means to her, she stated, "Being recognized as Principal of the Year for MCPS is deeply meaningful. I have worked with many incredible people, yet it has been at Hillcrest where my vision for compassion, dignity, and advocacy for children has taken root and spread among an entire community. My heart is full knowing that others see my commitment to doing what is in children's best interests, supporting them exactly where they are, and watching them rise to the expectations when opportunities are presented. I know that my love of children, together with the staff, who now shares and carries that same vision for, will always believe that the impossible can become possible." Ms. Lori Manressa. Both of these leaders have submitted comprehensive portfolios that will now move forward for state-level review, and we are hopeful that they will be selected to advance to the next steps of this process. So again, please join me in congratulating Mrs. Peep and Mrs. Manressa for their dedication, their excellence, and their tremendous impact they continue to make in our district.
Thank you so much. And if everyone will stay put, we're going to come down and take a few pictures as a board, and then we'll have some remarks afterwards, okay?
I've trained you all so well. You're just in the right spot. Wow. There you go. And one, two, three, a couple more. Good. Thank you. Yes, please.
Do you? Did they want to hold him?
Yes, they do. Sorry.
Yeah, something to make them stand out. Perfect.
Lady in the black blazer? White shirt.
Now we're talking. Here we go. And one, two, three, a couple more. And good. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
As we come back, I just want to say congratulations to our Sunshine State Scholars, but also our Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year. Your rise as leadership is a testament to the work that you do every single day, but not just the work you do, but the work that is being done on your campuses and every campus across the district. So we are so incredibly grateful for you. Board, did anyone else have any other comments they wanted? Okay, Ms. Conrad?
Just very briefly, I'm so grateful for the leadership from both of you. And what you couldn't see, because your back was to the audiences, with the wonderful district staff that is here. While Lamar was reading all about what you all do, everyone in the audience was nodding their heads. And so the impact that you have has spread throughout our community. And so we're just very grateful for the work and the example that you share each and every day with your students. So thank you.
Yes, thank you both. Another round of applause.
Oh, yes. Thank you. I'll just say that I couldn't agree more. And having had the opportunity to work directly with Lori Manressa for a lot of years, shall we say, it's just really exciting to see you get this honor again. And if the state has any kind of recognition of talent, you will be the state Principal of the Year. And same with the Vice Principal from North Marion High School. It's where I started. I know where it comes from, and I'll never forget my roots. So congratulations again.
Thank you, guys. All right. With that, back to the superintendent.
Okay. I recommend approval of the agenda for the December 9th, 2025, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of items D-22.1, D-22.2, D-22.3, D-22.4, D-22.5, and D-22.6 that have been placed under discussion regular agenda items and items C-11.1 and C-16.1 that have been placed under discussion pulled agenda items.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second. That's a motion by Board Member Conrad and a second by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Ms. Martinez Young, please provide the proof of publication for tonight's school board meeting.
The notice for the December 9th, 2025, school board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on November 28th, 2025. The proof of publication has been attached in board ducks under proof of publication.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 28th, 2025, school board meeting?
The move.
That's a motion by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
A second by Board Member Thrower. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 31st, 2025 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Campbell, second by Board Member Cummings. Is there any additions or corrections in the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Martinez Young, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do. We have one speaker.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Young. Good evening, Attorney Powers. Please explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of the Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure that the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures are available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a disciplinary matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name or identifying references of other students or their families. That's also strictly prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Young, can you call our first speaker, please?
Amiracle Watson.
Good evening.
Good evening. I forgot how to...
Just spell your last name for us.
Oh, Watson, W-A-T-S-O-N.
Wonderful.
I'm a little short.
You all have five minutes. Feel free to get started.
Okay. Hi, my name is Amiracle Watson. I'm the founder of Diamond Girls. Our mission is to help young ladies develop the tools they need to be successful in life. And our core is CARE, which is Community Advocacy, Resilience, and Empowerment, because we care. And tonight, I just want to be here to fill in a gap, to address you all on what is missing for our girls. I am here to invite Marion County Public Schools to partner with Diamond Girls for our Phase 1 and Phase 2 initiatives. Phase 1 of our empower... Phase 1 is our Empower Her brunch. It's already underway with the data and the impact speaking for itself. This isn't about socializing. It's about community mentorship, transparency, and empowerment for our girls. The empowerment brunch provides a safe, structured environment where girls can be heard, supported, and encouraged. We bring in community leaders to speak with transparency, share their struggles and triumphs so girls can relate and see possibility and believe in themselves. Leaders such as Wesley Wilcox taught our girls about the power of their voices and civic duties. Dennis McFadden taught our girls about safety, school safety, and cyberbullying. And Judge Leanne Mackey Barnes, who shared her story of being bullied in school and how her resiliency led to her becoming the first black female judge in Marion County. Last year, over a hundred girls signed up with ninety percent in attendance. This year, over a hundred and fifty attendees with eighty percent girls and twenty percent parents. These girls come voluntarily, not from school promotion or district challenges, channels. This resulted in repeated participation, sold-out events, and girls leaving with the confidence to step into their power, demonstrating the real demand for this kind of support. Our initiatives have even expanded to Tallahassee, Orlando, Jacksonville, Gainesville, and also Georgia. Through these events, we train student ambassadors, helping girls to go from sitting in crowds to actively shaping the Empower Her brunch itself. Just like with Cut Different, with having success supporting girls, boys, girls have been overlooked. The pressures of adolescence, societal expectations, and the rise of grooming and adultification, being forced to act older than their age, combined with raising rates of sadness, hopelessness, and exposure of violence, as highlighted by the CDC, makes these interventions crucial. Phase 2 of our Diamond Girls Shine Now initiative aims to bring the structure, mentorship, and empowerment of the Empower Her brunch directly into the schools, providing safe space where girls can build resilience, navigate change, and develop life skills using the heuristic and trauma-informed approach. That means we teach girls that their first reaction to change is not the only reaction. They can pause, reflect, and choose a healthier, stronger response. Through our trauma-informed care, we create safe, nurturing environments where girls can explore emotions, build resilience, and develop essential life skills. But if we cannot do this alone, partnering with Marion County Public Schools will allow us to meet girls where they are and provide consistent, structured support to navigate change, prevent emotional dysregulation, and empower them to succeed. With your help, we can reach more girls, provide consistency, and address the gaps left by school closures like Sermy, New Leaf, Pace Center for Girls, and the Heart of Florida Youth Ranch. Our girls are seeking these spaces. Waiting means missed opportunities. So if we, as adults, need emotional support to show up and succeed, how much more do our students need it when they are experiencing the most challenging parts of their lives? Thank you.
Thank you. Did we collect her email address, right? Okay. We'll probably reach out, because we'd love to get the information for the brunch, I would imagine. So we'll reach out via email so we can get that information to the board. Thank you very much. Any other speakers?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We will start this evening with our information items. Bear with me, because we do have a little bit to read into the record this evening. We'll start with Item 8.1, Guaranteed Maximum Price or GMP for Roof Replacement at Lake Ware High School. Change Order Number 1, Work Authorization Number 3, Project 24-122. Lake Ware High School's roof required replacement on Buildings 3, 4, 6, and 7. The school district used a construction management delivery method, including a guaranteed maximum price or GMP, to perform construction work on this project. There were unused funds on the project. Since the project was delivered using a construction management delivery with a GMP format, unused dollars, regardless of the item, are returned to the owner. The unspent monies will be returned to the owner via a change order, which will close the financial books on this project. Additionally, the project schedule experienced a slight delay due to the scheduling conflicts. The original substantial completion date was on or before August 8th, 2025, and final completion on or before September 8th, 2025. The contractor is requesting that the schedule be amended to add four days, resulting in a new substantial completion date of August 12th, 2025, and a final completion date of September 12th, 2025. The superintendent or designee has signed and approved the change order. Per Board Policy 6345, the superintendent or designee is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract by $25,000 or less or that will decrease the construction contract amount, provided that approval shall be in his or her judgment in the best interest of the board. Such change orders shall be binding upon execution by the superintendent or designee. The superintendent or designee shall report each change order that he or she approves to the board at the board meeting that follows his or her approval. The superintendent or designee's approval of the change order shall be entered into the official minutes of the board meeting. The original contract for the work was $2,939,652. There were no previous change orders. The cost of this change order is a deductive amount of $41,442.50, resulting in a new contract amount of $2,898,209.50. Additionally, the timeframe is an addition of four days, which will extend the substantial completion to on or before August 12th, 2025, from August 8th, 2025, and final completion on or before September 12th, 2025, from September 8th, 2025. Item 8.2, Guaranteed Maximum Price GMP for Brick Remediation at Westport High School. Change Order Number 1, Work Authorization Number 3, Project 24-122. Westport High School had extensive water intrusions from the roof during heavy rain events. The project was broken down into two phases. Phase 1 consisted of the roof drain repair, and Phase 2 consisted of the brick remediation. The school district used a construction management delivery method, including a GMP to perform. including a GMP, to perform construction work on this project. There were unused funds on the project. Since the project was delivered using a construction management delivery with a GMP format, unused dollars, regardless of the item, are returned to the owner. The unspent monies will be returned to the owner via change order, which will close the financial books on this project. Additionally, the project schedule experienced a slight delay due to having to shift the project to summer break at the school, had testing occurring and needed quiet throughout the day. The original substantial completion date was on or before May second, two thousand and twenty-five, and final completion on or before May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. The contractor is requesting that the schedule be amended to add ninety-one days, resulting in a new substantial completion date of August first, two thousand and twenty-five, and a final completion date of September first, two thousand and twenty-five. The superintendent or designee has signed and approved the change order. Per Board Policy six-three-four-five, the superintendent or designee is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract by twenty-five thousand dollars or less or that will decrease the construction contract amount, provided that the approval shall be in his or her best judgment and the interest of the board. Such change orders shall be binding upon execution by the superintendent or designee. The superintendent or designee shall report each change order that he or she approved to the board at the board meeting that follows his or her approval. The superintendent or designee's approval of the change order shall be entered into the official minutes of the board meeting. The original contract for the work was one million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. There was no previous change orders. The cost of this change order is a deductive amount of ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents, resulting in a new contract amount of one million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-two cents. Additionally, the timeframe is an additional ninety-one days, which will extend the substantial completion to on or before Au- August first, two thousand and twenty-five, from May second, two thousand and twenty-five, and final completion on or before September first, two thousand and twenty-five, from May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Item eight point three, Price Increase for Item Thirty-three on Bid Four-One-Zero-Seven MF School Cafeteria Products for Central Warehouse Term Contract. United's, United Sales USA South LLC was awarded Item Number Thirty-three Aluminum Foil Heavy Duty Ten Pounds, Eighteen-Inch Roll by Five Hundred Feet, Dash Zero-Zero-One Gauge Reynolds, or Acceptable Equal on Bid Four-One-Zero-Seven MF School Cafeteria Products for Central Warehouse Term Contract. The awarded vendor has replaced a, received a price increase from their supplier due to tariffs and increased freight costs. Therefore, the per case price for Item Number Three has increased seven dollars and two cents, changing the per case price from twenty dollars and seventy-seven cents to twenty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. As part of reviewing their, this requested price increase, purchasing staff contacted the secondary awarded vendor to inquire if the produce would be supplied at their bid awarded price. However, they have also received a similar price increase from their supplier, so it was not feasible to purchase from the secondary awardee. Therefore, we are requesting an increase for the primary vendor. This concludes our informational items. Now, onto the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items C-ten-point-one dash C-nineteen-point-one, with the exception of Items D-twenty-two-point-one, D-twenty-two-point-two, D-twenty-two-point-three, D-twenty-two-point-four, D-twenty-two-point-five, and D-twenty-two-point-six that have been placed under discussion in regular agenda items, and Items C-eleven-point-one and C-sixteen-point-one that have been placed under discussion in pulled agenda items.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Conrad.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. Moving on to alternative placements to Bridgeway Academy. Before addressing, um, expulsion matters, I would like to acknowledge the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Ms. Martinez-John, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. two-six dash zero-four-eight-E, J.D. two-six dash zero-five-four, J.D. two-six dash zero-five-five, J.D. two-six dash zero-five-nine-E, J.D. two-six dash zero-five... Did I say five-nine-E?
Yes.
Okay. For the remainder of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year and the first quarter of the two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven school year. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Conrad.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. two-six dash zero-six-four-E, J.D. two-six dash zero-six-five-E, J.D. two-six dash zero-six-six, J.D. two-six dash zero-six-seven, J.D. two-six dash zero-six-eight for the remainder of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year and the first and second quarters of the two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven school year?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Conrad, second by Board Member Thrower. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. twenty-six dash zero-five-three, J.D. two-six dash zero-five-six, J.D. two-six dash zero-five-seven, and J.D. two-six dash zero-five-eight with off-campus virtual learning for the remainder of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year for the first and for the first quarter of the two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven school year?
So move.
Motion by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Board Member Conrad. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. two-six dash zero-six-one, J.D. two-six dash zero-six-two-E, J.D. two-six dash zero-six-nine-E with off-campus virtual learning for the remainder of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year and for the first and second quarters of the two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven school year?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Second by Board Member Conrad. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, five-zero. Moving on to discussion regular agenda items. We'll start with D-twenty-two-point-one. May I have a motion to utilize the Florida Sheriff's Association Contract FSA two-five dash V-E-L-three-three-point-zero to purchase assorted vehicles for the Maintenance Department?
So move.
Motion by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Board Member Conrad. Dr. Brewer, do you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'd like to ask Ms. Usher to come to the podium to provide a brief remarks on this item.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Chair James, board members, good evening. The item before you is to purchase thirteen new vehicles for the Maintenance Department. When you approved the capital budget in September, you allotted one point three million dollars for vehicles for the Operations Department. Eleven of these thirteen vehicles are replacement vehicles because they're either, the vehicles are really old, like they're twenty-plus years and high mileage, and the repair cost is extremely high. The other two are new vehicles, one is a generated truck and one for the Plumbing Department. We, you will, um, we still have one other vehicle to bring to you. It's a septic pump truck. And on November eleventh, you purchase, um, approve the purchase of a clam truck for the Custodial Department. The total cost for this, um, is seven hundred and thirty-five, for this board item, um, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Brewer, do you have anything else to add?
Not for this item, thank you.
All right. Uh, board, is there any discussion on this item? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. Moving on to D-twenty-two-point-two. May I have a motion to utilize the Florida Sheriff's Association Contract FSA two-five dash V-E-H dash two-three-point-zero to purchase one Ford F-five-fifty box truck for the Central Warehouse?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Cummings, second by Conrad. Dr. Brewer, do you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Welsh will provide, um, remarks on the next two items. We understand you have to vote individually, but he will go ahead and provide information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Um, so I'm going to be speaking to twenty-two-point-two. Uh, this box truck is for the Central Warehouse. Uh, we are in need of a new box truck. It's a courier van effectively, uh, to replace a two thousand and two model with over three hundred and twenty-five thousand miles. Um, so this, this truck does need to be, uh, replaced. Um, we do have a spare truck, uh, but it is not adequate and is subject to a lot of repairs. Uh, so we do feel like, uh, having a, a new version that will last probably for the next ten to maybe even twenty years is certainly a good value, uh, for the money. We don't bring these up often, and this is not an item that we would be replacing on a regular, uh, basis.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. You're dressed very appropriately to talk about money this evening. I have to give you compliments to your attire.
Yes, thank you. I, I appreciate that. I can, uh, uh, thank, uh, quite a few folks actually who helped, uh, helped decorate me this, this, today.
Yes. Welcome to Marion County Public Schools during the holidays.
We all look great.
You.
Give it to us.
All right, board, is there any discussion on this item? Board Member Thrower?
Just wondering the cost.
Hundred and five thousand, seven fifty. So this is certainly not cheap, but again, not something that we do often, and this is a, a box truck that we're, we're talking about.
That holds a lot of Black Stallion reading books.
Right.
Delivered on time.
Certainly.
And I think we've gotten the use out of this one.
Yeah, we certainly have, and that, uh, that's to, that's to the district's credit. We'd like to, uh, make our vehicles, uh, last and, and go the mile, so to speak.
Off to the Maintenance Department. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand miles is pretty good.
Yeah, and the Fords, actually, we have a lot of, uh, staff that can handle the maintenance for Ford vehicles. That's why we typically, uh, like to purchase them. Uh, we can do the diagnostic codes and, uh, do a lot of the maintenance ourselves versus having to farm that out for other types of vehicles.
All right. Any further discussion from the board? All right, hearing none. May I have a, um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Uh, may I also have a motion to utilize the Florida Sheriff's Association Contract FSA two-five dash four-E-H dash two-three-point-zero to purchase one Florida F-six-fifty refrigerated box truck for food and nutrition services?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell and second by Board Member Cummings. Uh, we did hear from Mr. Rioswosz already. Is there any further discussion regarding this item, board? Just to highlight, um, this item is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Um, did you have anything further to add, Mr. Rioswosz?
No, again, this is a, a, a large truck, uh, NF-six-fifty refrigerated box truck. This is very large. Uh, this is something that the Food and Nutrition, uh, Program certainly, uh, wants to utilize. This is going to help us to transport, uh, our goods from different schools and sites on multiple occasions, and will also serve as a refrigeration, uh, unit that can be used even if it's not in mobile transport. So, uh, had some added value, uh, there. Uh, I don't have anything else to add.
All right. Yes, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. So what's always helpful for the community to understand is when we're purchasing new vehicles and whenever we're looking at these as individual items, it's not just that we're approving these large-ticket items, it's that we also are able to see the budget source. And so the fact that Food Services is actually paying for this refrigerated box truck that they are going to be using and needing is, is impactful and, and interesting to know. Um, the other two that we've already just voted on and approved are coming out of the Capital Projects Fund that we had already agreed to in the five-year work plan. So, uh, just again, educating the community a bit on how this budgeting and large-ticket items happen whenever we're knowing we're needing to replace vehicles, and these are outright replacements because we have really outlived some of the ones that we currently use. To make us more efficient in the school district, we need to purchase new replacement vehicles.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. And, uh, just to underscore that point, which is very important of where the funds are coming from, and these are not general funds, uh, this particular, um, vehicle, this truck, you know, we had to get approval from the state in order to have them, um, u- utilize these funds. So that's a good thing, and that's really goes to the credit of the staff to, even when we got denied the first time, we went back and asked again. So we have not, because you ask not, so kudos to them.
Thank you for the clarification. Uh, Board Member Cummings, I saw you leaning forward. Did you have anything?
Um, I'll save it to the end.
Okay. Any further comment from the board? Board Member Thrower?
Thank you, and maybe I missed it, D, on D-twenty-two-point-one for the assorted vehicles. What was the price tag for that? And, well, and also the funding source, if it's readily available?
Seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six from Capital Projects. We're, we're at almost a million dollars for the vehicle purchases for this board agenda.
Yep.
Any further comment from the board? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes, five-zero. And we're going to move on, items two, uh, twenty-two-point-four through twenty-two-point-six. Uh, Ms. Marant will be coming forward. Um, may I have a motion? May I have a motion to approve the new job description for Access Control Specialist two-point-four-four?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Thrower.
Second.
Second by Board Member Conrad. Uh, Dr. Brewer, I believe Ms. Marant's going to get, provide some information?
Yes.
Okay.
And yes, uh, good evening, Dr. Brewer, Board Chair, Dr. James, and board members. I'm actually going to provide comments for D-twenty-two-point-four, D-twenty-two-point-five, and D-twenty-two-point-six, which include the job description, staffing plan amendment, and the addition of the non-instructional management salary schedule for the Access Control Specialist position. The Access Control Specialist will ensure that district's physical access systems operate reliably and securely each day. Responsibilities include managing user credentials, reviewing system activity and troubleshooting issues involving electronic locks, door controllers, and card readers. As sites adopt access control, the specialist will support the transition by helping schools issue access cards to all staff members and ensuring credential, credentials, excuse me, are properly configured. The role also includes planning and installing new systems, partnering with the vendor and district departments on upgrades and repairs, and maintaining accurate inventories of all related equipment. The specialist will also assist with audits, follow established recovery procedures, and provide guidance to team members. While the position will be housed in the Technology Department, it directly supports the security of our schools and sites and will work closely with Mr. McFadden and our District Police Department. Due to the strong security responsibilities associated with this role, the position will be funded from referendum. Thank you, and I now return it to, I'm not sure, Dr. Brewer or Dr. James for any additional questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, we'll start with D-twenty-two-point-four. We do have a motion in a second, and we are talking specifically about the new job description. So what further discussion, board, do we have about D-twenty-two-point-four? No, it's okay if there's none.
Yeah, I, I think I'll leave it. Uh, it, it's, it alwa- I know we've had conversation recently about qualifications and that the diploma is all that's required and where it lands on the salary schedule does potentially, um, go over some of the jobs that do require a higher level of education. And so as an educational entity, we always want to highlight and, and increase uh, in folks' ability to educate themselves efficiently and effectively on the jobs that they need to be doing. However, this is a specific job that really is requiring verifiable experience in lieu of education. So just making that a point here as we'll have potentially employees asking questions about where this job fits on the salary schedule. Uh, the uniqueness of the requirements in the experience, I think, um, will help validate and justify where we're putting it on the salary schedule. And the hope is that we have such little turnover that their requirements to relinquish controls of people's duties and responsibilities will actually be so minimal that we'll be able to use this position for lots of other things around the district.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Board, does anyone else have any further comments about this item? All right, uh, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, five-zero. Moving on to D-twenty-two-point-three. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the amendment to the Central Office Staffing Plan for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year?
Chair, is that twenty-two-point-five or twenty-two-point, twenty-two-point-three?
Oh, sorry, D-twenty-two-point-five. You're correct, I apologize.
Thank you.
I'll read it back into the record. Motion to approve D-twenty-two-point-five, Amendment to the Central Office Staffing Plan for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member, um, Conrad?
Second, but I have to say I'm not seeing this or the previous one.
It isn't. It isn't. We're going rogue. Board Member Thrower?
Okay.
Second by Board Member Thrower. Uh, Ms. Marant's already provided some feedback here. So, uh, board, do we have any further discussion on Item D-twenty-two-point-five? This Central Office Staffing Plan? Board Member Campbell?
Uh, we have lots of things on this staffing plan that are not related to the job description that we just discussed. So, um, in conversation we'll have in just a little bit to talk about our, uh, insurance plan renewal, just a note here on the staffing plan change is that we are approving a specialist, uh, for health and wellness that is the funding source of Florida Blue to be paying for that at a little more than ninety-three thousand dollars. So that, that was the thing that stood out to me on this So that was the thing that stood out to me on this ahead of the conversation we're going to have in just a few moments, more so even than the technology things that we're adding. Certainly, every time we balance a budget and we balance it based on the cuts that we had to make, a lot of cuts, anytime that you're adding positions that are costing the district two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars out of the general fund, then it causes me pause as well. I understand why we need these positions, but we definitely balanced a budget, cutting a lot of things. And so these are the kinds of things that offer red flags to say, if we balanced it then, then how are we continuing to balance it as we continue to add and add and add? So that, I'll just leave that there. I understand the funding source for one of these is through the federal IDEAB grant, and then obviously I already mentioned the Florida Blue. But anytime we're pulling out of general fund, it caused me pause. But I understand why we need them, so I'm giving all of that context to what we're doing right now. But Board, every time we approve the Central Office Staffing Plan changes throughout the year, we need to give it this kind of pause and consideration and always have discussion about them.
May I add just a bit of clarification? I just want to make sure that we're clear. The one document that we are voting on is the Amendment to the Staffing Plan with the Access Control Specialist. The other two documents are requested documents that we received, that you all requested from us, that just shows what has been approved previously. So those items are already approved, these aren't new items coming forth. But this is just so you all are able to reference it each time. That was requested at the last work session. So we're only approving the one change. The rest are past changes for Board reference as requested by the Board.
Thank you for clarification. That makes sense why they're not in red, all the whole items, I understand that now. And I remember when we approved, but seeing them in a summative document does help us keep track, again, of what we've been doing. We haven't had that before, so we know again where we were at the end of the last fiscal year and talking budget. And so it's helpful to see what we're doing on a regular basis.
Absolutely, and for that context, that was something that this Board requested, was to see as we, every time a Central Office Staffing Plan Amendment comes before the Board, as Chair, I intend to place it into discussion, the Superintendent and I have had that discussion. But also, it will come with those two subsequent documents to look at the holistic picture of additives and deductions at the Central Office level as well as the school level. We know that the school allocations don't come before the Board, but that was a question we had when we talked budget about, well, what's the plus and minus on that? And so that summative document's now going to come before us every time we have this discussion for transparency to the community too, to see, you know, yes, we're adding a position to the Central Office Staffing Plan, and we're a little north of two hundred thousand, but we've added millions of dollars to schools. And so really having that comprehensive conversation to talk about, you know, where we're adding the funds and what it looks like.
Thank you.
Just very, I just want to thank you, Ms. Morant and Chair, for that clarification because it was a challenge for us as we were trying to work out the budget, you know, at the conclusion of that cycle. So just wanted to say thank you because that was particularly important to me, so I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Board Member Thrower?
Yes, I just wanted to add too that presenting a balanced budget for us to vote on is statutorily required, and that is a snapshot in time. In a business of our size, the landscape is ever-changing. You know, there's people coming, there's people going. It's a dynamically fluid environment. So I am really glad that we're trying to put as much structure around it as we can and be really mindful of, we have really important positions that we need to fill that may or may not be attached to a student roster. And it doesn't make those positions any more or less important to the effectiveness of our organization. Yes, we need to be mindful of every single position, but I will be steadfast in my own view that everyone that works for Marion County Public Schools is making some kind of contribution to student success, including that big truck we just approved that's going to be carrying a lot of Black Stallion books. You know, that driver may not have a student roster, and the person that unloads that truck may not have, but they're incredibly valuable employees. So I guess I just wanted to put that out there because with budget constraints being what they are, and this past year being such a perfect storm with having to wait so long before we even had a budget, it just made everything exponentially more difficult. And it would be easy to point fingers and place blame, but my preference is to let's move forward, be better, and acknowledge that everyone here is playing a critical role. That's what I have, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Moving on to D twenty-two point six. May I have a motion to approve the Revised Non-Instructional Management and Support Services Salary Schedule? Motion by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Second by Board Member Conrad. Board, do we have any further discussion on this salary schedule? Ms. Morant, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nothing to add.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Moving on to discussion pulled agenda items. C sixteen point one, may I have a motion to approve, a motion to approve the Gallagher Benefit Services Agreement for Agent Consulting and Actuarial Services?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Conrad, second by Board Member Thrower. Dr. Campbell, you pulled this item and would like to have further discussion?
I did, thank you so much. Again, this is one of those things, as we consider budgeting and how much money we have and so forth, what started my research and kind of deeper dive into what we see here, obviously in the narrative that we see in Board Docs, it shows from where we started in two thousand twenty at three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to last year, we actually paid, or the total amount, not what we paid, but the total amount that this agent received was roughly five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And so that's a significant change, two hundred thousand dollars, in just a few short years. And so that's what started my thought process. And then as I did a little deeper dive, there were some specific things that I would like to see us potentially do, Board, and this is certainly, this is why we're having discussion about it. So what we would be approving right now would be a three-year, one-year, with one-year renewals, a three-year contract for four hundred ninety thousand dollars. I understand that part of what this is, is inclusive of a fifteen thousand dollar RFP for our dental provider, not dental, anyway, for one of the providers right now, that's the guaranteed money. And the rest of the dollars come from the commissions paid by the insurance carriers themselves. And we also received information from Mr. Welsh that shows exactly how much money we did pay last year versus what it said. So let's see, it said about five hundred seventy-five thousand they would receive. What the district actually paid them was a little more than a hundred and fifty thousand because they received so much in the commissions. It also caused me to take a look at how the City of Ocala does theirs as well as Marion County. And as we continue to talk efficiency, and we know that the state has their Department of Government Efficiency, I just wanted to ensure that we did, had a conversation about what this looks like. I know that we have been with this provider for as long as I can remember, and I know that this predates even the current existing staff that worked there because there was an original agreement with Barrett-Liner back forever ago, in the eighties potentially, that the Barrett-Liner Agreement worked with the school district, and then it became Barrett-Liner Bus. And then in the last several years, Barrett-Liner Bus has now become Gallagher. I have not done the deep dive to see the difference in what the Barrett-Liner Bus fees were in comparison to what the Gallagher fees are. So I'm apologizing, I haven't done that deep dive, but that is something that I intend to do. What I would like to recommend, Board, and I know that that's not what this agreement says, but what I would like to recommend is that we do a one-year renewal with no increase over prior year. So right now, the contract is saying four ninety. I say we do a one-year agreement at four seventy-five because that's what we approved last year. And the fees and commissions, honestly, it feels like what is being received, the fifteen thousand dollars should be absorbed on the RFP, but I can go either way on that one. That's kind of where I am with this, and I know that we changing a contract in the middle of a board meeting, whenever it expires in less than thirty days, is not ideal, and that's possibly not something we can even do unless we have a special board meeting that has potentially already been advertised for the eighteenth, and we could potentially have it in that meeting that potentially could be held. We did have on our calendar a special board meeting on December eighteenth, and that was canceled today, but it could be published because we hadn't actually published that yet. So that's where I am. I mean, I believe Mr. Welsh sent out a lot of information for you all to see, the specific questions that had been posed, as well as the responses that had come in, where we are, where I am in this budget crunch that we're in, especially in comparing the other municipalities in the county and how their agreements look. I think it warrants us to have a deeper dive on this. I know the team comes before us in the summer, and they give us all the information of how much we need to be considering adding into our plan. We don't actually get their renewal contract until December, just before it expires. And so that's where I personally would like to see us do a one-year agreement and go back to the amount from last year, and then do an even deeper dive over the course of this next year and see if there are additional cost savings that we potentially could have. That's where I sit.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. I'm going to give it to Attorney Powers to start. Can you give us an understanding of the ability to do what Dr. Campbell's asking before the Board gets into deep conversation about it?
Yes, provided that the parties are amenable, it wouldn't be a very difficult change to make. That would require negotiation with Gallagher on those particular topics. But provided that that was something that staff was willing to negotiate in to their contract or, you know, I could also do that, that is something that is doable and doesn't take a lot of turnaround time. It's a simple matter of amending the contract, and we can knock that out in a day or two. The question is whether the parties are going to agree. Because where parties don't agree, things can take much, much longer for everyone to get discussion and feel comfortable on it. So.
Understood. And so just to be clear about the way this can go, the item has action as of tonight. The Board will need to vote it up or vote it down. And if we vote it down, there is availability for it to be on the agenda for December eighteenth, but it would have to be at seven AM, that's when the meeting is published for. And presumably, negotiations would occur between now and then, and maybe the same agreement would come before us again on December eighteenth, or a different agreement depending on how negotiations go. Would that be a good summary of where we're at?
Yes, and I think that we could do, I mean, we can do a special board meeting with short notice at any time.
Well, we already have a board meeting scheduled for December eighteenth at seven AM. So I mean, as Chair, I would say that the best thing to do would be to arrive for that meeting, at least have a caucus of three Board Members so we can vote. So I guess if you want to have some further discussion about Dr. Campbell's request, is there any Board Members who have comment on it? Dr., Board Member Conrad?
I agree with Dr. Campbell. The first thing I wanted to look at is moving this to just a one-year agreement because we are on a very tight timeline. So I am open to that part of the discussion.
Okay. Board Member Thrower, did you have something?
Yes, and I'm wondering about flexibility, getting this contract sooner. It always distresses me a bit to have a last-minute conversation on a pretty deep topic with all of the legs to it that were shared by our CFO. So we have a pretty great and longstanding relationship with this company, and it would be my desire to really maintain that, you know, in good faith and look for ways to avoid anything like this happening again.
To piggyback off of what you just said, Board Member Thrower, I liken it to our conversations about SROs. And we wound up saying, let's go three more years, and over the next three years, we're going to backwards plan into how we could potentially do this differently three years from now. I liken it to that same conversation. And so I would be more aligned with you, Board Member Thrower, in just understanding that we are where we are with this, and let's take some time over the next three years to button up what this could look like or not in the coming years. But I want to hear from Board Member Cummings as well.
I, I'm hearing this conversation. What happens if they are not agreeable to this?
If they're not agreeable, then I can't make an amendment to the contract, and therefore we would have to...
The same...
Same contract.
We'd have the same contract back in front of us again to vote up or down.
But we don't know if we don't ask.
Correct.
Correct. And that would be something that staff would need to, you know, take those issues that have been identified by Board Members, have a discussion with Gallagher, decide what they wanted to do or offer, and see if that was something that could come to some agreement on.
I also think it's important to note that for publication deadlines, in theory, the item would need to be posted on Thursday by noon.
And how long are we willing to go through this negotiation process of get them to see if they want to do this?
Yeah, I can only tell you how long it would take to...
How long is this board willing?
Make the agreement, to make the amendment to the agreement. So I can amend whatever agreement the parties are amenable to, I can amend that relatively quickly. But as far as how long the discussion or negotiation will take, that...
Depends on how agreeable people are, yeah.
How long are we as a board willing to, how far are we willing to go?
Because ultimately, if we don't have a contract, then can you talk us through, then what does our insurance coverage look like for our employees after December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five?
We would need to immediately renew a contract. Once it expires, it's dead.
Correct.
So I'd have to double-check the actual expiration date on this, but once that contract's expired, we would just, it's easy enough to take the same agreement and make it, you know, a new agreement instead of an amended agreement. But again, that's just all the writing and recording of it, not a matter of the negotiating of it, which is the hard part, and that's what staff would have to do.
Understood, I see Board Member Campbell.
So I think it's important for us to also see that whenever we started with the original agreement in two thousand twenty at three seventy-five, then we had a first amendment in two thousand twenty-three for four twenty-five, and then a second amendment in two thousand twenty-four for four seventy-five. So we've progressively, and so this is on me as a Board Member, on us as Board Members, to not have brought this up before. And in my opinion, I should have talked about this last year when we approved a four seventy-five that was already an increase plus a hundred thousand dollars, like that, that's on me. And so I didn't want to let this pass by again. To what Attorney Powers was saying, and maybe this is just for my understanding, I don't know, when we were talking about insurance for our employees, maybe I'm wrong, but I would say that our insurance and contract with Florida Blue is with Florida Blue. It's not necessarily with Gallagher, but maybe I don't, maybe Florida Blue only does business with Gallagher, and so then that's how we get Florida Blue? Or if Marion County Public Schools actually has the contract with Florida Blue and our insurance still continues, we just don't have that third-party mediator that does the things for us? And I don't, again, that's, thank you, Mr. Welsh, for coming to the...
Chair, can I ask staff to come up and respond to that? Mr. Welsh, could you respond to Dr. Campbell's questions?
Yeah, so, and I appreciate the very spirited discussion and questions, Dr. Campbell, that we received and responded to. Yeah, so this is a third-party administrator contract, which means that come in January for Florida Blue and our employees, who are still currently and will continue to receive and access their benefits, they will be able to continue to do so. That includes Vision and Dental and the like. This particular contract is for third-party administration, as is listed in the documents before you, actuarial services, consulting services, to the tune of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, up to that amount over a period of three years. The actual amount that the Board would be paying for the Vision RFP, which is embedded in this action, is fifteen thousand dollars to help us to write that RFP, which will then give us the ability to negotiate with the carrier what those rates are that our employees will be paying per member, per month, by which token the Gallagher Consulting Company will receive commission and the bulk of which is paid for through that vehicle. And so I just want to be clear that the way that the contract is structured is such that there will be a minimal impact on the Board as far as this action goes because we don't, we're not in the process of doing an RFP or need their consulting services to do RFPs for medical or dental. Those will come up in not-so-distant future, but for this action, that's not what we're discussing here. So to answer the question, we will see no lapse in coverage for our employees in January with this... What this will do is if the board decides to do a one-year contract extension versus three years is that we obviously will, will, will have a very short runway to evaluate the real merits of the contract and really do that deep dive that I think myself and my team want to do. But I can tell you that it is something that will take a lot of time and there's a lot of nuance to it. So I'll leave it there for now for any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. And just for the, the board's information, I guess, the difference in the municipalities. The city of Ocala does have a flat fee of $90,000 and then all of the commissions that would come in from the carriers actually go back to the city. The county is set up very similarly to the way we are. Theirs is, I think, 275 is with their third-party administrator and that administrator receives all the commission. So just for context, so everybody's kind of understanding, and I understand the differences in the numbers of employees is different of those, but they are completely different arrangements.
Board Member Thoreau.
Thank you. And maybe that's an apples-to-apples comparison and, and maybe it's not. I would be a lot more comfortable seeing some comparisons against like-sized districts that are also self-funded. You know, this board has been very on about trying to provide the best benefits for our employees at the lowest cost. And again, you know, the relationship has been incredibly consistent, incredibly supportive and has comprom- compromised as, compromised in, in ways that have allowed us to save a lot of money in a very, very competitive market. So as we continue this conversation, I feel like what I'm hearing from our CFO is that if we're going to change something, it deserves and warrants something other than a decision at the board table at 6:42 PM. I don't know. I'm leaning a lot more towards getting the, the research and then making the, the best, most educated decision if we're going to change something that's already. I don't get it, the, I don't get the complaints. I mean, we all want things to cost less money, but what has gone down between 2020 and 2025?
Yeah, Board Member Thoreau, if I may, I'll just point out maybe to, to, to help clarify something there. Yeah, there, there, certainly Gallagher is, is a private company and like a lot of private companies that we do business with, there are oftentimes escalations, inflation, there's tariffs, there's all kinds of forces that sometimes require that we pay more from year, one year to the next. In this particular case, really what's driving it is the number of employees that we have on staff that are accessing benefits and the increased salaries that we increasingly pay year over year, which is a function. So if they get a commission off of the amount of per member, per month, and we pay more employees and we pay them more, well, then they're going to make slightly more money. Now, that's not to say we, we should not look at that, but I do think it would take a good, full revolution of the contract to really assess what is in our best interest because we don't have the internal capacity to write actuarial RFPs or to help really dive deep into some of, of those issues. That's why we hire Gallagher to help us save time and money to do so. Furthermore, the increases and additional dollars that we have paid above and beyond that 2020 figure are for RFPs and very particular work. One of the things I'd like to mention is that the Cobra payments that they have access, they have, we have utilized them as a pass-through. And so that does kind of speak to some of the dollars that we've actually been paying out from the district versus those dollars that they're receiving in commissions. I do have my coordinator here, benefits coordinator Stacy Roth, and a member of our Gala, the Gallagher team who can speak more directly to these issues. But I just want to be clear that the recommendation from Business Services is to move forward with the three-year agreement, but also take the time during that period to do the deep dive, to look at the questions that, that Dr. Campbell put before us so that we can come back with some real meaningful discussion. But it, it will take time and we do need to continue to have their support to administer our benefits.
Thank you, Mr. Riaz Welsh.
So perhaps we just call the vote and see what happens?
Yeah, I, I, I think that at this point, it would be appropriate to call to vote. I want to reiterate, you know, I think it's, I think we need to spend the next three years reviewing, reassessing and coming up with a strategic plan for how we go forward personally. Board Member Cummings, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I don't know, they're just going to alter the vote. I mean, that's.
Um, sure, if you'd like to come forward and share, absolutely.
I, I, I just want to speak to some of the numbers and maybe clarify the numbers that are in the contract. So the contract prior to this year was written in such a way because Gallagher and previously Barrett-Liner and Bus, so as Dr. Campbell alluded to, this precedes many of us up here how these were written. We were serving as a pass-through for the Cobra administration. I, I do not have all of the details on that, but I believe it had to do with, with contracting. And as an employer that has more than 20 employees, you're required to offer Cobra. So Barrett-Liner and Bus, then Gallagher was serving as a pass-through for that program. The insurance regulation says that if a vendor is paying for Cobra administration for a client, that could be considered rebating, and so we were required to write the contract in such a way that we did. Gallagher has not received $475,000 in commissions or payments from the school board at any point during our contract since 2020 or prior to that. And actually, this year, we are slated to receive less commissions than we did last year. Some of that is due to the fact that the negotiations on the disability policy decrease the cost. And so that naturally decreases our compensation because we're paid on commissions for those. So to Dr. or Mr. Welsh's point, the only increase that we could receive is because of increase in population, particularly on the medical plan. It is a per employee, per month compensation at $3.50. So for new employees that enroll, that would be $42 per year for the employee an additional compensation. This year, as I mentioned, we are slated to receive compensation at about $325,000. Because we actually provide payment back to the district for a position as well as the FSA administration. So it, we will actually receive $400,000 in compensation and reimburse the district $75,000, making our compensation around $325,000. This year's contract does not include, because we are no longer serving as the pass-through for Cobra because the district was able to negotiate directly with a new Cobra vendor. The contract this year actually looks significantly different and we outline our compensation for each line of coverage and there is no overarching number, as has been in the past, because we're not required to do the consulting agreement. There was some question on why Gallagher's contract is always at the last board meeting of the year. We are required for transparency purposes to list every vendor that we work with. The stop-loss policy does not get finalized and negotiated until October and November. We are required to wait till the final vendor is named to be able to put that into our contract, which is why it delays your ability to see that information. So I, I wanted to clarify, you know, what the compensation numbers actually are, how this year's contract will look. We most certainly in the past have offered, to Dr. Campbell's point, some more direct contracting with the district instead of maybe doing per employee, per month fees or commissions. It was not at that time, you know, something that they wanted to consider. And I do think if you want to look at that, there would be some definite pros and cons. We have groups that operate on the commission and fees basis that you're operating on right now. We have groups that operate on a direct payment for employer-sponsored benefits and a commissions payment for employee-sponsored benefits. Or we have groups that operate on a completely direct compensation model. So those are most certainly options to review, but I think that it would be important that we do the due diligence of reviewing all of those and what it might mean to the district. I think there is one consideration, if we were to go to a direct model after just one year, all of your contracts with the carriers would have to be redone because currently they include commissions. So they would all have to be rewritten. And I think, you know, you would need to work with the legal department and the contracting team to determine how quickly that could be done in one year, considering the number of vendors we would need to be working with.
Thank you for those clarifying remarks. I appreciate you being able to offer those to us this evening. Board, Board Member Conrad?
I, I know, I know you're ready to call the vote, but I also wanted to say thank you for explaining that in further detail. Thank you, Mr. Welsh, for that, your explanation also. You know, we're hearing that it's going to be another tight year in public education. And so that kind of makes you question and look deeply and when you're looking at bigger numbers going out and trying to cut corners where we can. And so I just wanted to let you know that's where my mind was, was there a space for us to save money? But I just, I want to thank you for explaining and going into detail what exactly this amount of money looks like and how it's divided up and, and you know, how it's collected. So thank you, thank you all for being here this evening. Appreciate you.
All right. Board, at this point, I'm going to call for a vote. Board Member Thoreau?
Just out of courtesy, I know Ms. Roth has been waiting and.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Is there anything else to add?
I don't have too much to add. I just wanted to say that the commissions are paid directly from the carriers. This is not checks that is being cut from Marion County Public Schools. The $100,000 for, was for the RFP services and the audit services that we had above and beyond the actual contract itself. The commission schedules are negotiated in with the contracts that we have with all of our carriers. So that would take some time in order to renegotiate those contracts, in order to do something different. So where you see the $375,000 when we first started to execute those contracts in 2020 versus where we are now, we had the Evergreen survey where we were looking at increasing wages. We have increased wages since 2020 with all of the different union contracts. A lot of our lines of coverage do count on employee wages. Your disability is up to 60% of your wages. Your life insurance is based off of one and a half times your annual salaries. So salaries do matter and over five years' time, those salaries do increase. So we had to take that into consideration. So for these last two years, we've also opened two new schools. So with an increased number of people, we've also done the enhancements for the health insurance. We had four enhancements last year, which means we were anticipating more people participating in the plan. Those are good things because they are doing preventative care. So they are being healthier. That's what we want to happen. But with that comes more people enrolling into the plan. So it's not that Marion County School Board is actually paying these commissions. These are coming directly from the carrier. So even though we are increasing that amount from 375 to 475, that is just allowing them to take those commissions that are coming off from those carriers, not necessarily a check that's being cut from Marion County School Board. So I just wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you.
I would just like to make a recommendation, if I could, that, you know, with this robust discussion tonight and, and the robust relationship that we've enjoyed, you know, all these years, that it definitely warrants a work session topic at the appropriate time as, as we move along and, and stay informed on this, on this, on this topic.
Yes, I definitely agree. I'm sure in the spring, we can circle around and have a conversation. Obviously acknowledging tonight, if the contract fails, we will put it on the, the 18th board meeting at 7:00 AM regardless, so that we can have another shot at it.
Chair James, if I can just add, it's, I certainly don't take it lightly. I really do appreciate the line of question and I think that's the right mindset. And even though I'm up here with a reef with some dollar bills on it, I can assure you that I am very frugal and that we will be looking at all contracts. And so I appreciate the questions and the pleasures of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at that board, we will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those nay?
Nay.
Motion passes four one with Board Member Dr. Campbell dissenting. May I have a motion to approve grant application, workforce development capitalization incentive program, CAP grant?
So move.
Motion by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Second by Board Member Conrad. Ms. Thoreau, you pulled this item and would like to have further discussion?
Yes, absolutely. It's, first of all, it always catches my attention when it's over a quarter of a million-dollar item. And it also really catches my attention when it has anything to do with the new South Marion High School that we're going to be opening and, and all of the dynamic things that they have planned. And in the end, you know, when you apply for a grant, hopefully it gets awarded. But regardless, it's all taxpayer money, no matter where it comes from. So I'm just happy to hear further information on this grant application. Thanks.
Awesome.
Okay. So I'll ask Melissa Connor to come up and provide a few remarks on this to highlight the success of it. And also I want to thank Mr. McAtier for staying with us this evening in his Christmas sweater so he can also share the benefits for South Marion High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burr. Good evening, Board Chair and Board Members. I am here tonight with the very festive principal of South Marion High School, Ken McAtier, to provide you with some information on the Workforce Development Capitalization Incentive Grant. This grant was created as part of the governor's initiative to make Florida number one in the nation in workforce education by 2030. Artificial intelligence technologies are rapidly transforming nearly every industry. To ensure our students are prepared for the evolving job landscape, we're opening the Artificial Intelligence Foundations Program at South Marion. This program will provide foundational skills in computer science, machine learning, robotics and data analytics. Mr. McAtier?
Move that mic up.
At South Marion High School, we intend to go beyond preparing students for specific careers. With AI foundations, we aim to equip all learners with a core understanding of how artificial intelligence is shaping the future of work in society. This program will serve as both a career and academic bridge, preparing students for post-secondary studies and high-demand occupations in AI, data science and related fields. The industry outlook for jobs in this field is bright and growing. For computer occupations, there's 1,497 annual openings in Florida and for data scientists, has 694 annual openings with an expected 4% annual growth rate. These figures demonstrate strong and growing demand for AI and data-driven skill sets in our state. This grant covers $259,635 to outfit this program, including high-performance computers capable of running AI software, robotics kits and sensors for hands-on learning, and curriculum licenses and materials. And I would also like to thank Kathy Adi and her team in career and technical education for their hard work in helping to secure this grant. Thank you.
Thank you both. Board Member Thoreau, did you have any further questions or remarks?
I'll just say it's awesome. You know, career and technical education is definitely what I'm all about and I know that the rest of the board is very supportive too. And anytime there's an opportunity to, to amplify the great things that we're working on to provide opportunities for our students is always something worth talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Thoreau. Thank you, team, as well, for being able to provide some extensive insight. Board, is there any further discussion on this item? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Board. We will move on to meeting reminders. There is a, there is no longer a special board meeting, December 18th at 7:00 AM. That has been canceled and removed from our calendars. And we will have an administrative briefing and work session December 18th, beginning at 9:00 AM. We will move on to Board Member comments. I'll start with Ms. Martinez Young.
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. I almost called you Reverend, Reverend Powers. Attorney Powers, anything from your office?
Uh, yes, actually, I just wanted to point out that one of the things we did tonight on the consent agenda was to schedule a public hearing for the January 13th, 2026 board meeting for the purpose of approving the recommended revisions to certain board policies. So those have been discussed at work sessions, alterations have been made. There will be a public hearing on that date, January 13th, and input from board members as desired. Then at that point, we can move forward and publish those.
Wonderful. Thank you for reminding the public of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Brewer?
Yes, ma'am, I have a few things, if you don't mind. I want to say thank you to a couple groups. Last Friday, our students from Hammett Bowen Elementary were invited to participate in the Marion County Sheriff's Office Christmas Party. And I was able to be there for it, and it was just such a special day. But I also want to acknowledge, they hosted the party, but the family of Mr. and Mrs. the late Mr. Dunlap and Mrs. Dunlap, she was able to be at the party to celebrate and to recognize the students. And it's just an incredible event, and so I want to publicly acknowledge them and thank them for their support. We also, the board, we were able to participate in Bellevue's Christmas Parade this Sunday. And I want to acknowledge the Florida Express Environmental Team. They sponsored our spot in the parade, and they even decorated it with festive neon, what do you call them, flyers or decorations? So it was a beautiful float, and they will do that again for us this Saturday. So we're appreciative of them. I also want to just highlight a few data pieces. I'm not going to give it all away because we know that we have a work session provided next Thursday, December 18th, where Mr. Whitehouse will provide more data. But at this point, we have about 79% of the students have tested in grades three through eight. And at this point, every grade level for ELA has shown improvements, and we're grateful for that. And I just want to recognize the teachers and the staff that have worked, not just the teachers, everyone on the school campus that have worked so hard at this point. And we have a few more days of testing left, so we're looking forward to those results. Two exciting upcoming events, I already shared, the Ocala Christmas Parade is this Saturday, the 13th, starting at 5:30. But we also have a special caravan taking place this week to recognize our Teachers of the Year. So we're excited about that. And that is my comments for this evening.
Thank you. And we will go over to Isaac Smith from North Marion High School.
Yes, thank you, Board and Chair. I'd like to start by giving other congratulations to Ms. Pete from North Marion High School. She goes uncredited a lot of the times on how much work she puts in and gives to our students. I just wanted to give her other congratulations. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, because I don't want to say it wrong, will you say it so that I can say it correctly?
Shiraya Hussein.
Shiraya, okay. I was going to say Shiraya, and I was like, I didn't think that was correct. So Shiraya Hussein Donarami. Is that correct? Say it.
Anywhere.
Okay, thank you. Okay, from Dunellen High School.
I have a couple of things. I just want to say thank you for having me.
Make sure you speak right into the mic.
Okay. Thank you for having me, even though this was on such short notice. I know the last time I was here that there was some communication about railroad ties in Dunellen and some concerns about that. I've done a little bit of research, and it turns out that the company that supposedly put it there is now moving due to the concerns for the people, which is great because I know everybody in Dunellen. We all love the Rainbow River, and we all care about it deeply. My second thing is that I would just like to shadow a lot of the teachers that have been new to our school. I know we have a lot of kids this year from the Oaks area. And I just wanted to say that the eighth program is fairly new to our school, and I just would like to shout out a couple teachers that have been doing really well since it's their first time teaching it. I would personally like to shout out Tessa Sherm. She's teaching ASL, AS level. I know she's doing great, and I would just like to shout out her. My last thing is going to be another shout out to Mr. McAtier. I remember you from middle school and how great of a principal you were, and it's really nice to see you move along in different parts and different schools and departments in Marion County. I know you're going to do great, and I know that you care about this county a lot.
Well, thank you for those wonderful remarks. We all second what you said about Mr. McAtier. He's a staple. I'll move on. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you, and he's such a good sport to wear that wonderful sweater. Thank you to Ms. Connor for ensuring that everyone was outfit if they did not come outfit this evening. This has been really fun and festive, and even though we've had long meetings starting at 4:00 today, it's been a, we should dress up all the time. No, just kidding. That is a joke. Nevertheless, today in the consent agenda, we approved a perfect audit for Madison Street Academy. So kudos to them and that team. And also wanted to mention, just, I was going to mention the Bellevue Christmas Parade also, so that was a great time. And thank you to Mother Nature and the good Lord above. We did not get rained on like we did last year, so that was terrific. And looking forward to the Ocala Christmas Parade this weekend. Also wanted to make you all aware that the Tuesday, January 27th, board meeting that we have coming up will be the first evening that I will need to be in Tallahassee with the Florida School Boards Association. So that evening's board meeting, I will be participating virtually. So I'm going ahead and letting Mr. Christian know that January 27th, Tuesday, that will be a virtual attendance for me. Also wanted to make you guys aware, just because I don't know that we have talked about it much, but Dr. Brewer and I, she is such a rock star on these calls, we've been having so much fun. So we've now held three calls with the staffs from Senator Scott, Senator Moody, and Congressman Fine's office. And we're working to schedule Congresswoman Kat Cammick's staff as well. And really just doing introductions to these federal staffers that may or may not have much interaction or knowledge of Marion County and much less Marion County Public Schools. So it's been a wonderful opportunity for us to share that with them. They've had interesting questions of us today. They're asking, why are you having the growth? Like, what is, why is Marion County continuing to see growth? Because they're getting, when you think about being a state senator for the state of Florida and looking at one, two people being the entire state of Florida, their staff gets a lot of information from a lot of different folks. And so just grateful for those opportunities that we've had to talk through that with them. We also have members of their staff that are helping us with the sand skink stuff. And so hopefully, we're going to get that rectified with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. They know what we need, and so they continue to help us in that regard. And finally, from a legislative standpoint, I received a text from Jessica Janice Hewitt tonight. We're still awaiting a bit. There's some language that's been filed in the Senate on attendance. It's not exactly what we want. So we know that Senator McLean did have what we wanted in bill drafting, and so it would be easy to add to a bill that is being seen. Also received information from Representative Chamberlain last week that our attendance language, specifically the way we want it, should be in the bill being, coming out of committee, out of Rep. Trebolski's committee. And he also met with budget staff to discuss gifted program allocation, potentially either a magnet just for Marion County or actually what that would look like if it was budgeted all across the state for gifted for each district. So those are the things on the legislative front. There's a lot of movement happening. But as we head into sessions starting in January, there'll be plenty of opportunities for us to talk to our leaders and ensure that our platform issues are being heard loud and clear. So I think that will wrap up my comments this evening. Thank you for allowing the deep dive on what we've started with insurance contracts. And I can say thank you to the FSBA Joint Conference. I don't know if you had the opportunity to attend one of the sessions that I did specifically with Thomas Kennedy, Reverend Cummings, but that one session helped me learn a lot about a tool that now Dr. Brewer and I are both kind of using, and we'll be happy to share with you guys, how to use it as well to just help do some deep analysis really quickly on things as we progress and move forward. Anything we can do to make ourselves more effective board members is exactly what we learned at the School Board Conference. And so that was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for us to have professional leadership and learning. So that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Reverend Cummings?
Good evening, everybody. Happy holidays, happy Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, whatever you're celebrating, I'm glad we're celebrating, and we're close to the end of the year. We had a very, very, I thought, a very productive FSBA conference last week. Speaker on that first day really brought forth some things that this board really needs to take into consideration. I shared with Superintendent Brewer that I think we need to figure out a way to get that person here and present, not just to Marion County School, but to our county as a whole, because it talks about growth. It talks about why the growth looks the way that it looks in Florida. And particularly, I could see Marion County in that situation clearly. I could see clearly, especially when we talk about schools that have declining populations and districts that have increasing populations. So I'm hoping at some point, we can have a conversation about getting that person here and it not be just a burden, financial burden on the district, but it be a shared cost for the whole county, because it would benefit every governmental agency in Marion County to have that presentation here. Grateful to the young lady from Dunellen that is up on her current events concerning what's happening in Dunellen, specifically in the Chatmine Community, and how it affects not just one community, but it actually affects, actually affects three counties. It actually affects three counties, because if it runs off into the Rainbow River, there's some counties that that river runs into, flows into, that's going to affect the environment. Oftentimes, we had those conversations, we talked about the environmental effects, but there's a human, there's a human capital effect in all of that as well that can affect people for generations to come. It was strange, Dr. Campbell, I came back on, I left Tampa Conference on Thursday to get to Dunellen to be to this meeting, and at that time, Representative Grove showed up at the meeting and gave us the news that CSX would move those railroad ties. Great news, but not enough, not enough, not enough, because they haven't been moved yet. So people give you, they'll sell you something quick, and they'll tell you they're going to get it done. And I appreciate the work that Representative Grove did in getting them, but I won't be comfortable until it's gone, until it's been moved. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate that a younger group of people are paying attention to what's going on, because it could affect them for generations and generations to come. So kudos to you, and thank you for being aware of that. Tonight, and I'm probably going to, two more things. Tonight, we approved $987,237.17 in the purchase of vehicles for this district. When you look at the agenda, you look at what was purchased, they weren't luxury vehicles. They weren't, they weren't Bentleys or anything, or SUVs or anything of the such. They were vehicles that were necessary to do the work in the district. When you go back and actually look at what was being replaced, many of these vehicles, I think the latest vehicle was, or the youngest vehicle was 17 years old. I don't think any of us up here are driving 17-year-old vehicles and expecting it to get the same efficiency and production that we would a new vehicle. So what this showed me, and should show our community, is that this district has been very good in being good stewards with what they have and taking care of the vehicles that they have had to get 325,000 miles on the vehicle. And in Marion County, you can do that quickly because of the size of our county. But to make it last 17-plus years says something, is a testament to our Facilities Department, our Maintenance Department, and the people that drive those vehicles every day. So they're not hot-riding, they're not drag racing down the boulevard or in the forest or anything like that. They're actually utilizing those vehicles to make sure that those vehicles do what they're supposed to do. And people may say, well, they're vehicles. How's that help kids? It supports every student when they're able to do their jobs and what they're functioning for. So I am truly, I have no problem with approving things of the such, because it supports the district and it makes us more efficient. It makes us get the job done better. So I'm grateful that we got through that. And then finally, on a lighter note, on a lighter note, I am just so thrilled to see everybody but Mr. Blackman. He had a, he had a, he had a good one. He had a good one. He had a tie. But I'm looking forward to next week, next week work session, amen. Everybody's going to be in their Christmas sweater. Listen, Mr. Welsh, I don't know where, I don't know what that was, but he got the prize tonight. It's the ugliest.
The ladies got a hold of it.
Is that what it was? The ladies did it? Okay. Elena did it? Okay. Now just Mr. Blackman, he had on a Christmas tie. Listen, it's, we go through so many serious things throughout the year, have so many serious conversations. There is a time that we all need to have some lighter notes, and this was one of those times. So thank you, guys, for the ugly sweaters. Keep wearing them. You look good in them. Actually, ugly sometimes make people look better. So Merry Christmas, guys.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Board Member Conrad?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to piggyback on how Reverend Cummings finished up, and I, too, am appreciated. I appreciate the participation in the holiday attire this evening. This time of year is hard. It's difficult. All the students are excited and may not be quite as excited about the holiday festivities and focusing on their work. So it's a challenge to be in classrooms and in schools right now. And so I just think that it really exudes one team, one mission, as we all participate in lightening the load just a little bit as we move into the next couple of weeks that are, tend to be challenging as we try to corral our students and keep them engaged. So I just, I want to give a shout out to the team also. I also want to thank the board and the superintendent. I think it's the first time the superintendent has ridden on the float in Bellevue. So we're really grateful that you took time. I know your schedule is so packed, and so I appreciate you taking time to be there. And we had a good showing from the board. And so just, you know what, everybody's super busy, and so I thank you for taking time to participate in that. I do want to give a shout out to Mrs. Guest, who was here earlier for the junior ROTC presentation of the flags. She did double duty today. The CEP was at her school this morning, and so they had a whole program, and her students did a beautiful, beautiful job. And they also had an agriculture expo or something. I don't remember exactly, so I apologize, Ms. Guest, that I don't remember exactly. But just again, the team and the work that goes into everything that our kids are able to participate each and every day. So a shout out to Bellevue High School for a phenomenal job. I want to say thank you to our student board members. Your comments are some of my favorite parts of our board meetings, and so just thank you for being engaged and participating. We all know that this is a really challenging time for you, that you are super busy and you have a lot going on. So thank you for taking time to prepare and be here with us this evening. So we're just really grateful. I know every board member at some point says, we just, we've been so lucky, and we're so grateful for the board members, student board members that participate with us. So I just wanted to give you all a shout out. And I think, lastly, I wanted to say, Dr. James was able to attend. The Children's Alliance had a program for Put Your Phone Down out at the Client Center last Wednesday, and it really was, it was phenomenal. Dr. James, I don't know what you walked away with, but as a new grandmother, you know, I know that it's not good for cell phones to be in the hands of our young people. And as a primary educator, I know that that's not good. But it was so great to get the, go and get the science, what that does to our children's brain when they're on their phone all the time, and what that looks like, the evidence that they're able to share. And so I would encourage, I'm seeing a lot of shares on social media. I'd encourage you just to take a minute. The mayor, Marciano, shared a video clip. It's very short and to the point, but just in curi, it's, I think, and also the website is Screen Strong. Dr. James, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, I was trying to remember. Just take a minute. They have parent resources, classroom resources, all of those things. And I just encourage you to take a second, to take a peek at it. It was very informative and a little depressing than how much damage our cell phones are doing to our young people. So with that, just want to thank everybody, thank our team... So, with that, just wanna thank everybody, thank our team for being here this evening, and looking forward to seeing everybody on Saturday for the Christmas parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Thrower?
Oh, my gosh. Isn't this the most wonderful time of the year, honestly? And I'm glad that we're all celebrating it together. It's just uplifting and, and we're, I know I'm enjoying every minute, and I think everyone's starting to feel the spirit, so that's great. I wanna start with thanking Dr. Campbell and also congratulating you. This FSBA meeting last week was the first time you were introduced as, formerly as the president-elect. And that was pretty cool to, to witness your introduction. It is a big deal to be representing at that level. And so, I just wanted to offer my congratulations. I, I guess you'll be getting actually sworn in, right, at the summer, in June? Okay, all right. And I kind of purposely chose, you know, coming just on, on Wednesday. I knew with my schedule that I had to make some decisions, and I just drove down and drove back. But a big reason for doing it was I didn't wanna miss the keynote, because I knew he was gonna be awesome, and he did not disappoint. And I really look forward. I love that idea of incorporating all of our entities, because just tremendous impact on everybody. And what I can say to students is, if you want to get a high-paying job, anything to do with the aging population, because the birth rate is not replacing us.
That's right.
That's the bottom line. So, our country is aging, and people are living so much longer that they're going to need a lot of help and support and research and just opportunity to continue to live well. So, just, that struck me right away, like, talk about career and technical education. You know, there's just gonna be this whole big opportunity. And, and also, just really what it means to have so many people retiring, you know, as, as the baby boomer population. I think there were like fifteen million that were born in a very short amount of time. So, that, that was just a, a great way to kick off FSBA. And it did make me realize too, that in this era of just continuing to question, as we always have, but even with a sharper pencil, that, you know, there's, there's a lot of ways to participate and, and, and still get some fantastic content. I, I know when I first started, it was, I, I, some years I was there for four days in a row, you know, with the chairmanship training and, and all of those things. And then if you choose to serve in a leadership position and, or positions in FSBA, it's a big commitment right after Thanksgiving. It, it really, really is. But I think I was reminded all over again what a dynamic organization it is and how they've worked hard to be responsive and, and be really relevant in, in what they're sharing. So, it does bring me also to thanking and, and feeling so good about not only our student board members taking an interest in local issues, but also the relationships that we're building with our state leaders and, and now, you know, moving towards our, our national leaders. They really need to hear what we're hearing, especially when it comes to, it took me even a while to come around to the fact. It's just the way I was raised, you know, bootstraps. Pull yourself up by your bootstraps. Well, with what has happened in society over the past fifteen years, the kids are paying the price, you know? We've been played totally when it comes to this instant access to everything and everything in the palm of your hand. And I think that we're all starting to wise up to the impacts of that. And that's really, really important for our kids' mental health and, and well-being. That is a recurring theme. It has created a difference in society that we've never had to experience before. And I think as adults and as leaders, we need to continue to amplify that. This has nothing to do with anything except the well-being of our children. So, the more that we can partner with our legislators at the local level that are really starting to see, hear and understand, because they visit our schools, they, they meet with us, strengthening the relationships, you know, at the national level is, is only gonna help kids. And, and I'm really proud of the legislation that we have pushed for that looks like we're on the, the cusp of, of some foundational changes that are really gonna help kids. So, I thank everyone for continuing to, to drive that home. The kids need it, you know? We have a great attendance initiative. And representing Oak Crest Elementary School, you know, they are just really rocking it. And we were talking earlier about the impacts that even folks that may not necessarily have a student roster make with Marion County Public Schools. I just have to give a shout out to Dr. Brockington in HR. I, I think we all got that email. You know, she's supporting instruction a few days a week at Oak Crest, you know? To me, that really blurs, blurs the line in terms of just blowing up the silos. It's, it's the commitment to children that we all have in common and to kids and young adults. So, I wanted to make sure I shared that and really appreciate it. Our Christmas parades are rolling along. We've got the big one, the Ocala Christmas Parade. I continue to be really grateful to John Paglia and Florida Express Environmental for, you know, that's a lot of work to put that float together, but their employees love doing it and love driving. And hats off to Sue Mosley and, and her team, because talk about herding cats. Oh, my God, to try to get all of those participants wrangled and having the parade start on time is a tremendous undertaking, and, and they do it with panache, for sure. It was mentioned earlier that the closing of Sermi and, and New Leaf and, and that was a big change for this community. But we do have Bridgeway, you know, Academy now, and, and they're doing incredible work. And I'm incredibly proud to represent them as their school board member and, and continue to support them in, in any way that I can. Pace, losing pace was definitely a loss. And I think what killed it was that we just weren't, there, there wasn't anything in, I guess would have been in the budget that they use the most money from to provide transportation, you know? It, it's really hard to get disengaged kids to school as it is. And then if you make it hard for them to get there, you're just not going to have the results and, and the attendance that you need. We had sixteen students tonight, I think I counted, you know, the expulsions and so on. That, that just, you know, tells me they're completely off the track. And when you look at the cost of that, both socially and financially, of, of not getting it right the first time, you know, not availing yourselves of the opportunities that you have in Marion County Public Schools and the resources and the support, it is so much more expensive to do it on the backside and try to recover kids, which we're certainly committed to doing, because that's where they are, and we're meeting students where they are, than to, to get it right the first time. And, and that's why these foundational changes are so important, including, and I think we're getting some traction now about looking very closely. In the old days, three tardies was, was an absence. And, and that could be counted towards an unexcused absence. Well, the law's kind of squishy there, but not that squishy. But what we're seeing now is that there's another way to do it in terms of counting missed instructional minutes. So, if you have missed enough instructional minutes that add up to a school day, well, there you go. And so, we're, we're working through that, Dr. Brewer, and, and thank you, Mr. Rembert, I think he had to, to leave, for being at Oak Crest Attendance Response Committee meeting. This is where the, the rubber meets the road of taking away all of the barriers so we can create that path to a streamlined approach where everyone understands that if you take these steps and we hold you accountable and we provide so much support that it's almost too hard not to do it right, then we are going to get the outcomes that we're all searching for. We have other very high-performing districts that are already doing this. And again, that is a benefit of the communication, collaboration, and the partnerships that all of us at different, different ways and different levels take to improve student outcomes. So, this time of year, the most wonderful time of the year, the, the gratitude that, that I feel and the excitement that I feel of all of the hard work coming together on the one team, one mission is, is a great way to come to the close of our first semester. So, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. To piggyback off of that, I wanted to share accolades. The school that my children attend, they actually got ninety-nine point one-five percent attendance on Thursday last week, which is huge. And so, I wonder, have we ever had a school get a hundred percent attendance? So, it's just a wondering I have now. Has any school ever done it? Ninety-nine point one-five percent is pretty close. And truly, I mean, during testing, those parents all committed to making sure students are showing up. And so, I just wanted to give that shout out to Madison Street. And then on the other notes, already been mentioned tonight, let's, I was able to attend the Look Up Summit. Had a really cool keynote there, sharing some information. And, you know, it was, it's interesting to watch the room and people respond differently based on their unique lived experiences. And I do, you know, my home looks like a very traditional nineties home. That's sort of how I explain it to people. It looks like how I grew up. My kids aren't on devices. And so, it just looks different in my home, but I realize that that's not a reality for a lot of people. And so, kids are on handheld devices, or they have Game Boys or video games. And what this summit really shared in this keynote was, and, and I, you reminded me, let's connect, make sure Dr. Brewer gets the information for some of those resources, because I think some of them are even no cost, that we could get out through mental health and, and wellness potentially into the, our parents' hands. But the research is staggeringly supportive that students do not need to be engaged on devices. You know, being bored is okay. I tell my children all the time, being bored is a choice. Go find something else to do. Go outside, go play, use them on your imagination, read a book. And so, as parents, becoming okay with our children being bored, I would encourage you to give it a shot, maybe over the holiday season. One of the things we talked about, and I, I reached over to Beth McCall during this presentation, the, they were talking about research about the brain and how when you're not engaged in digital consumption, your brain looks different. And I said, how cool would it be if we did a case study on kids who go to Camp Kiwanis? And we partnered with a local neuro, somebody who could do a brain scan before Camp Kiwanis and a brain scan after Camp Kiwanis? Because Camp Kiwanis in our community is an environment where kids go and they have no screens. And how cool would it be for direct reflection of our community to see what our kids' brains look like after they've been on summer break for, let's call it, three or four weeks, probably consuming a lot of screen time, and then go to Camp Kiwanis where they have nothing for five days? It'd be interesting. So, I don't even know if it's feasible, but it was something that came up, because I would love to see, I think that would have a lot of impact in our community, you know, for parents to understand really that impact it has on their brain. So, really cool stuff happening there too. Board, I wanted to update you. Last week, I went to the Reddick Town, Town Meeting. I think that was last week, last Thursday, maybe. They love all things, so they're, that the interlocal had on it. I know, Board, you haven't seen it, but it was everything we discussed. And so, the town is reviewing it next meeting, they're meeting next month. Hopefully, they'll have it, and I'll bring it back. And then eventually, it'll land on an agenda for us, which is the typical procedure. But they were grateful. It's interesting. The town actually has a, an in-town belief that the courts were theirs all along, because they were the ones that actually put them in. However, they put them in on our land. And so, when we put up the fences, they became ours. You know, the town always just used them and maintained them. And then when we put up the fences post, you know, twenty-eighteen, they all of a sudden became ours. And so, this kind of gives them back something that they have perceived to be theirs all along. So, I think it's a positive. Board and I look forward to that agenda item coming before us some point probably in the next couple of months, once the attorneys do what the attorneys do. I wanted to remind you all that you should have gotten an email from Ms. Morant regarding the superintendent's job description. That is on the board agenda for the work session next Thursday. And it will obviously be published to Board Docs on this Thursday, but I wanted you to have it ahead of time. Couple of things just to remember. She, we have a new JD template, so the old JD is on the old template. And the new JD has some predetermined things that are a part of it that were never on the old JDs. And Ms. Morant's really done a very good job in her department of getting us up to speed, shall I say. So, the new JD, the only things that are on there that the board is starting from, the ground rules of sorts, are those desired characteristics that we all kind of agreed to in our workshop on the first. And then some of the things that Ms. Morant has an expectation of us, including based on physical limitations, et cetera. So, if you wouldn't mind just trying to review a little bit, and if you have any thoughts, concerns, anything you wanna add, we'll have that discussion next Thursday. And then we are headed to Tallahassee again in January. Some of us are gonna go up, Dr. Campbell's obviously going up Tuesday, and then we'll be there Wednesday. The visit with the representatives is Thursday. So, if you are intending to stay in a hotel, Board Clerk, would you be able to let the board know when they need to get that information to you by?
Registration closes January thirteenth, so I'd like to get it before I leave or we would leave for Christmas break to go ahead and get them.
Okay. So, Board, if possible, by next Thursday at the workshop. If you are intending to stay in a hotel or be a part of the conference for FSBA, the conference dates there, please make sure Ms. Martinez-Yong has that information so she can get your reservations taken care of. For myself, I will be driving up on Thursday for the visits. I imagine Jessica Jahannowitz and Dr. Campbell, you'll probably spearhead the work in that. Okay. We did have lots of wonderful recognitions and lots of great discussion this evening. And I am looking forward to a productive work session next Thursday. And then we'll have a few weeks off. And that is one of the things that I love about public education is we get a time for fellowship with our families. Our, our staff get to go home and spend time with their families. Some have traveled home to a different location other than Marion County. But it gives us a time for rejuvenation and a reset. So, looking forward to that. Hearing no further business, they have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion by Board Member Conrad, second by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. This meeting is adjourned at seven-thirty-seven. Thank you, Board.